All right, let's get started this regular council meeting of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the freedom of justice, strong.
Stand right on your shoulder.
What am I doing right behind you? No, you get, you go. All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Loughlin.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stolman.
All right, give me a motion, someone to approve the agendas tonight, agenda.
Two minutes.
Second.
Give the second. All those city discussion. All those in favor to approve the agenda, say aye.
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 All right, move on. Consent agenda consists of the minutes of the April fourth regular council meeting. A Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales privileges for the Cedar's Edge Golf Course. Approve the seal kill, seal coat quote for twenty twenty-two from L.L. Pelling. He claims for April eighteenth in the monthly financial report, which is February. Motion, please.
Come on. One second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
We usually ask Chief Hannah, is there any issues with Cedar Edge's liquor license?
I remember.
No, we.
I had to take them to the, take them to the.
We haven't had any issues out there.
Previous ownership.
Previous owner.
And were you able to hear me?
Barely.
Yeah, we have not had any issues.
I've heard.
We have not.
Sounds like he's in the choir. Okay.
All right. I don't have any questions, comments. So hearing none, let's vote on the consent agenda, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yep.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stolman.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Okay, we will have a presentation tonight from Mr. Jerry Flengel, CEO of the Hoover Presidential Foundation. That's something to show us. Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I understand the council is, is a lot wiser now. We have another council person that got a, had a birthday this weekend, so congratulations.
Older and wiser.
Well, very good. Well, first off, I just wanted to kind of give you a brief overview. We've had a lot of things going on with the foundation, the Hoover campus, so forth like that. So I just appreciate the opportunity to update the council on that. First off, is we're new in the neighborhood. We purchased the U.S. Bank Building back on January, or excuse me, June eighteenth last year. We did some renovations to it. We moved in November eighteenth, and it's been, we're still waiting on finishing the elevator on there. That's a supply chain issue, so forth like that. But we're really happy to be in here and be on Main Street because we really wanted to be on Main Street to be a bigger part of the community. The building is named after L.C. Rummels, who served for several decades on the Board of Trustees for the forerunner organizations of the Hoover Presidential Foundation, the Birthplace Society, the, I think, the, the park, so forth like that. And he was really the one that put all the, he purchased all the properties, was in charge of putting the original park together. This has been back in the nineteen fifties. So in fact, he actually had to purchase his mother's house. It was interesting, on their talker in the movies. So that is not always easy to do. Very civic minded. In fact, he was a former mayor of West Branch. And of course, then he built the present building where the bank is today back in nineteen seventy-three and seventy-four. So we're really happy to be on Main Street and be a part of it and be a positive part of the action. So next up. We just, this is a photo of just inside. This is a picture of our gallery. This is our, what we call our glassroom conference center. This is the basement, which we've redone on there. And of course, the vault, we call it the vault conference room. That's our administrative offices there. And of course, then pictures of some of the other offices as well. And of course, we have the Community Development Group. Jesse Simon is office in, in the building as well. One of the things that we did was we did a complimentary rent for, so forth like that, and storage. So let her use it for meetings. So I think it was just, one, she needed the space, and two, I think it just is a great partnership on that. So we're really excited about this and just the different things we can do. One of the things that we had in, in the gallery, the big open space that we had, is we had our festival trees in Christmas, during Christmas time. We've had numerous meetings. I think even the Community Development Group, they had a Saturday morning session, you know, where they're doing focus groups. So, you know, a little of not having a real community center, we're hopeful in some way that we can help fill in some of those, some of those needs as, as done on that. So and it will make it available to any other nonprofits, or for instance, the city, you know, or the school, so forth like that, on an as-needed basis. We haven't really pushed it an awful lot because we're again waiting for the elevator to be done. So the downstairs is a little more accessible, but anything on the main floor, we've got a pretty good space. We've got almost eleven hundred square feet there that we can use. So next up, I would just point out too, the yellow house, we moved, and we're look, it's looking for a new location. One of the things that our plan on it is, is to sell the yellow house to somebody that would be willing to move it. We'll sell it for a dollar on there as long as they, they move it and, and fill in the foundation, or you know, dig up, remove the foundation, fill in the hole, they can have it for a dollar. So we've had a couple of people interested, putting things together. Ultimately, some things came up that changed for them. We still have a couple of other people that are interested in it, but it is available on there. We're not at a big rush to do anything, but we'd like to do something at some time on there because old houses sitting empty just don't get any better in condition. So and we think it's a really valuable, can be, can be really, it's a really good shape, new roof, so forth like that. So we're hopeful of that. And then what we'll do with the eight, one point two four acres that we have on there, ultimately, we'll be working with the Park Service to incorporate that into the park landscape at some point. So. Museum renovation project. This is our big one on there. This is a picture of Ronald Reagan at the nineteen ninety-two rededication of the, the last time the Hoover Library Museum was renovated and then expanded on there. In fact, I didn't realize till last summer, you actually worked on that, I think, so.
For like twelve weeks.
Anyway, so it's, it's been thirty years on there, and most museums get refreshed every twelve to fifteen years. Technology has changed. You know, I liken it to cell phones. In nineteen ninety-two, you had brought them in a black bag, plugged them into your car, and they cost a dollar a minute. And it's a little bit different now these days, but, so we really had a need for a museum renovation project on there. So again, twelve, fifteen years is the normal, we're at thirty, so we're double. We are the oldest museum in the whole National Archives system right now. So it's time, not that that has to be a reason to renovate, but it is time to renovate. And I think we've really done a, I think, a step-by-step process to do that, and I'll cover that real closely here. So the steps in the project for renovations, we needed to choose a firm for the concept design study, what it'll look like inside the museum. And of course, then we did the concept design study, and we evolved focus groups, including many local West Branch residents. I think there's some in this room that actually participated in some of those on there. And then after that, we did a feasibility study. What can we realistically raise, fundraise for this project? This just wasn't a, Jerry guesses a number, and that's the way it is. We actually had brought in a consultant that evaluated and looked at our donor base and the project and interviewed people and came up with basically, we could raise up to twenty million dollars on that, is what the feasibility study came back. The board ultimately has reviewed and approved that, and so now we're into the project. And so step number four is obviously marketing the project as far as what we're doing. We're talking with a lot of donors, with other foundations and groups. And of course, it's called the Timeless Values Modern Experience for the renovation of Hoover Presidential Library Museum. These are just a few of the concept designs. BRC Imagination Arts was the firm that we chose, and they are one that, they're based out of Burbank, California. And if you've ever been to the Lakin Presidential Library Museum in Springfield, Illinois, they're the ones that did that museum. In fact, I still consider it, even though it's sixteen years old right now, probably the best presidential museum in the country on there. But they really do a lot of interactivity. The scene you're seeing right there is basically, they call it a perfect hill, and it, it characterizes when, and immerses you as with Hoover, when Hoover was in Australia on there, in the mines, and it was hot and so forth like that. Another one here is, this is almost set up like a movie theater. The different screens will show different things on there. One of the things, the challenge that we have is, we're not, we're only going to probably put on about a twenty-five hundred square foot addition, but we're going to basically gut the museum portion and completely redo it. And when we redo that, you know, we've got, Hoover's got a big story, ninety years, very productive life. And so we got to squeeze a lot into it. We're going to use a lot of interactivity with different screens to do that, and that's just one scene right there. Another one is this setup like a train station, almost with the different stations on there to talk about his world travels and what he did with his world travels on that. This one will basically be towards the end and will wrap up his life on there, and it will show the various accomplishments. And the idea when you come out of that is to really trying to invigorate people to carry on what Hoover did. You know, he was an uncommon man, and basically what he did and how people could be uncommon themselves and challenge them with what, with the ideals he had. One of the keys to our campaign, obviously, the timeless values modern experience is the Hoover Tax Credit. We were able to have the Iowa Legislature pass it last year. Interesting, I think it passed eighty-seven to three in the House and forty-six to zero in the Senate. And those three legislators that voted no, we're bringing them to West Branch for education this summer. No, just kidding. Anyway, we're fortunate to have the governor come last June tenth and sign the bill, making the tax credits there. And surrounding her, obviously, is legislators from the area, Dave Jacoby, right on the left at the blue shirt. Tim, I'm forgetting his last name, is a state senator from the Burlington area. Zaff Walls behind him, Bobby Kaufman, and Bobby Kaufman and Dave Jacoby really work closely to get it done and in a bipartisan fashion. Of course, Alan Hoover, Margaret Hoover, and then Lieutenant Governor Adam Greger all looking on as the governor signs it. So it's, that is a real key to our success, and this is why. It's a twenty-five percent Iowa State Tax Credit on any amount donated to the Timeless Values Modern Experience Campaign. So for instance, for every thousand dollars, a person will get a two hundred and fifty dollar credit that they could use on their state taxes. It's not two hundred and fifty dollars off, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar credit on there. We've had some good success at the end of twenty-one with people that we talked with. One of the things that we found that was really encouraging is, we started talking with people, they virtually found, and we walked them through with the tax credit and the federal deductions. In essence, a lot of times, you could actually spend less than half, you know, for a thousand dollar contribution, you might have less than five hundred dollars. I mean, and so it's, especially, there's just various ways that, not only cash, but you know, one of the things that we really tried to emphasize too is appreciated assets as well. So we have five million dollars in Hoover Tax Credits that were granted to us. It's on a first come, first served basis, and the credits must be used by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which is less than two years now. So we are really publicly coming out with our campaign kickoff on April twenty-ninth. May, we're really going to be hitting it hard on there and all the way right on through. So the credits are first come, first served, so if they're gone sometime by mid twenty twenty-three, we're done with that on there. But the, the nice thing about the credits is they can be used for five years, tax years. So for instance, if you can't use the full credit this year, you still got five years to use it up on there. So the only limit, there's no minimum, the maximum is a million dollar contribution is the maximum credit is two hundred and fifty thousand per individual. So if you're a couple, you could actually go two million dollars on that. So but anyway, the Hoover Tax Credit is integral to the success of our campaign. And is, you know, really, the five million leverages, twenty million dollars are given, which is our campaign goal. It doesn't count those that we get from other foundations, or for instance, out-of-state money. We have a donor that gave us a half million dollars for this project that will not use a Hoover State Tax Credit. So there's, there's also, so there's the capability to go even more on that. So anyway, last I would just finish up with, we have our celebration banquet October seventh in Cedar Rapids. President George W. Bush will be joining us, and we'll have table and seat availability will be announced in mid-May on that. So we're still getting all the details worked out, but that'll be a big event on there. And some people say, why, why in Cedar Rapids? It's because we anticipate a crowd of a thousand people, and that's the only place, facility that we thought closest that could handle something like that. So it'll be a big event for us, the last time we had a former president do something with Ronald Reagan back in nineteen ninety-two, when he was here. So anyway, it should be a great event. That's all I have. I entertain, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So we got a lot going. The benefit that I point out to the city and to the townspeople on it is, is with a twenty million dollar renovation, when we complete that, it shows the tourism should almost, it will double and possibly could triple on there, which if we play our cards right, and again, working with Main Street West Branch, so businesses can capitalize off of it, because we really want to work with pulling them downtown, you know, pulling them wherever on there. In fact, with the hotel study, you know, I had an interview with the person conducting the hotel study, and that was, you know, we, we were sharing our plans with that because I think that'll have a, a direct positive impact on potentially getting a new hotel in West Branch as well, as well as supporting the present businesses as well. So exciting days ahead. Our completion, our goal is to have a rededication on August tenth, twenty twenty-four, which is Hoover Hoover's hundred and fiftieth birthday on there. So not much spare time, it's tight on there, but you got to have a goal, you got to start somewhere. Twenty twenty-four, yeah, so we're a little, two and a half years away. So anyway, so we'll have to get Jerry down there working double time, so anyway.
Probably wouldn't be working as fast as I do.
Any questions? Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the time.
CDG group, we just love you over there. We love that group over there.
Yep. So. That's good. And you know, like I said, you know, Lions Club beats there, we're going to have other nonprofits that we're going to open up to as well on there. And I think it'll be a good community center. And we looked at, we don't need an event center, we already got one in town. So we, we're just filling a small niche to help out. So again, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, the consent agenda, the non-consent agenda consists of the second reading of an order of seven ninety-two. Many chapters, one sixty-five of the code ordinances regarding signs in the HCI zoning district. Motion, please. Come on. Nick's got it. Okay, so we have. Had a, we did the first reading, we passed the first reading last time. Colton brought up a valid comment about limiting the potential size. So Kevin came back with us with a Correville model. Or Liberty, or Liberty and Tiffin. Which I can't even understand the Tiffin one. It's a chart. Go ahead, Leslie.
So I talked to Terry Gerg, he stepped in last week, he's our building inspector. He's the one who wrote the requirements, and then he provided what's in front of you, this, this document here. So we'd like to explain, when I told him what was brought up, he said that freestanding signs would be something like what Casey's has. You know, it's a, on a pole, that's what's considered freestanding. That's not a billboard, billboard is different. So he added some billboard language in here. So Terry, if you want to add to any of that, you can, and I think Kevin Olson has a question as well.
Um, I look. For the, you guys have concerns on size, freestanding. Freestanding sign, places that I've dealt with before, they usually go off to two square feet per foot of lineal lot frontage. So if you got a lot frontage of two hundred, you can go up to four hundred square feet. I sort of looked at all the properties up there on the HCI district up there, and they're about two hundred and sixty, some are a little bit larger for lot frontages. So that's, give you an idea of, you know, what, what they could have if we went with the two, you know, square feet per lineal foot of lot frontage. I looked at Walcott's, since that's a big truck stop up there, and yeah, you know, usually billboard signs are technically off-premise signs. And I, I got looking back through our code, if you look in our B and I districts under the sign ordinance, they have to be approved by council. Even have in town here. That's why, what I, what I did was I sort of copied the language for the billboard, billboards out of those, the B and the I zoning district for, for signs, to keep it uniform. And that's, that's what I did pretty much with the whole ordinance. I wanted to keep everything uniform, didn't want to introduce, you know, too much. You know, there, there's no definitions of signs, you know, in our definition. So I, I got on and looked up definition, Google definition of a billboard, and that really didn't tell you much, you know. The, I, I heard some concerns about all signs in a residential district in, in this front part of the ordinance that I wrote. And that comes from, if you look at the B and I district, they say all, you know, all signs that are allowed in a residential district. And I think the reason why they put that in there is because in some locations of town, like in the B and I district, there are some residential uses in that zone yet. They're not conforming. But they're in that zone, you want to give them the same rights as they would if they were in a residential zone.
That confuses me because the letter H here says all signs permitted in a residential district, which means no limit.
Well, there's.
Of any residential district. Well, this is HCI only, though.
Yes, but if you look at your B and I, you guys don't have a copy of your zoning ordinance here, but, but in your B and I zones, the first thing it says is permitted signs in the B and the I districts, number eight, all signs permitted in a residential district. So and so I went back and I looked at what, what's permitted in a residential district. Well, you can have signs for name and address of a building, name and address of management, like for a multifamily. So if there was a multifamily out there, you want to allow them to have the same, you know, size signs and so forth, you know, for sale, for rent signs, you know, church pulltens. And that's, and that's why it's in there. It's not like someone's going to go out there, they can't go out there and build a residential house out there, and who would want to?
Okay, like, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, but that, that's the reason why a lot of those are in there. I mean, because a lot of the times, these zoning ordinances were, were wrote after, you know, houses were there, multifamily were there. So. But again, the, the freestanding sign is not a billboard, billboard sign. They're two different birds.
So the like, the monument sign is two hundred square feet. Total. One hundred feet on one side and one hundred feet on the other side, is that right?
Yes.
Per face, one hundred square feet per face.
Yes. And that, you know, the monument sign, what, what you do with a lot of these signs, it's like with a, with a freestanding sign, you want to keep it at least ten foot above grade. You know, and then go up from there, because then you got that clear view. Same with the monument sign, you only want that monument sign so high so that someone in a car or a truck can see over it. You're keeping that space between what I put down for the height of a monument, six foot, keeping that space six to ten feet open, visual, if you're pulling out of the driveway or something, so you can see, so you don't get hit. That's, that's the reasoning for that. We, do we need to?
Does what Terry inserted here satisfy?
That's the council's decision on what, what that satisfied. That's a, that's a, what the proposal would be, is we can amend the ordinance to include what Terry has in the red here. My question I had is, and I got to double check on this, the online version of the ordinance had this as forty, one sixty-five point four two, and I just got a, and the, the book ordinance might be off when they recodified.
I think it might be, yeah, I took it right out of it.
So I've done that before, trust me. So we'll just double check that, make sure it's the right number, but.
Good catch.
I think I actually changed it, I think it's supposed to be three and four, and I think it was five and six, because I couldn't find the unit set.
That's the, the new ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, I got the old.
Yeah, I went off the online one, so I think we just recodified, so they, they renumber for us. Yeah.
And here's, here's another thing, is, is the difference between canopy signs and awning signs, canopy signs are rigid. They can be the canopy over a gas pump. They can be canopy over of a door, where your awning signs are usually fabric. And they can be retractable.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Yeah.
Sounds like we should put some definitions in the ordinance eventually.
So the canopy sign is only limited to the height of the canopy.
Correct.
The size of the canopy, because it can't stick above it.
Correct.
Correct.
You know, they're like the signs they, they put on top of like the Casey's, you know, only about this tall, you know, and however length they got or have, but.
Trying to determine if what Colton's initial concern was is being satisfied.
Well, I think it is. The billboard sign, it says, at the end of the day, has to be approved by council, so.
Without some, well, I guess four hundred square feet.
Yep.
And that, I think that one that's up there right now, the HCI, I think that was there before anything was there, I think.
Yeah.
So that technically probably was an off-premise sign at one point.
Yeah.
You know.
A billboard that's up there now?
Yeah.
One behind the motel, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
That's probably, if it ever got blown down, it wouldn't be going back, probably, that's the way those things work. Grandfather didn't use it if it gets knocked down. Yeah.
Does it have anything on it now?
Yeah.
For a while, it just had red motel.
Yeah.
That's where I want to stop.
Okay, so.
Who, who was the? You gave the motion.
Yeah, let's, let's insert Terry's language then into the motion. Just a motion. Thought Tom did.
Yeah.
Okay.
I amend my motion and add Terry's verbiage into the into my motion.
Verbiage noted in red.
Yeah.
As an addition. Through the second reading.
Correct.
Yeah.
I assume you're okay with that. I'm, yeah. Yes.
Does any discussion on that? None?
So we, so we're going off of the paper, not what's actually on.
Yeah, right.
Because this, this isn't everything.
It is.
Yeah, it's the changes. Yeah, it's got the exclusion for mine, so just move that.
This is everything.
Okay, we're going to vote, Leslie, on the amended motion first for approval of the amendment.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Stolman.
Yes.
Miller.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes. Is there any discussion on the overall plan then of the amended? Very none, let's vote on the, through the final vote on the second reading approval.
Same order?
Yes.
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Terry.
Thanks.
Thank you, Terry.
And Kevin for your research. All right, resolution twenty-two dash thirty-six. Accepting the deed for real property for use by the city of West Branch for the future dog park expansion, motion please. Second someone? Okay, so this is a triangle of property just south of the existing dog park, which is currently county property. Which we have been mowing for years. The animal control commission would like to make it a second dog park.
I actually think it's needed. The second dog park is actually needed, because the first one is used so much, it gets tore up. And then you can't, it can't recover.
Yeah, so it's a good.
The word, what would be good would be to be able to like, close one and then they can use the other one and then that one can rejuvenate itself. And you just keep alternating them back and forth. I mean, that's kind of a pretty, pretty cool thing that we have a park that gets used so much and running it out.
Right?
We don't, we don't have that problem with all our other parks.
I don't know what the cost is any more than what we do now, we already know it. A little more, a little more maintenance and fencing.
What?
Pardon?
Where? Keep talking about a triangle. Just south of the existing.
We've, there's already a shelter there.
Yeah, there is.
No.
We've been taking care of it.
There was a reason why they didn't want to give that to us at the beginning, I don't remember what it was.
There were some ties, they wanted us to like maintain the trail and a couple of other things, which they're not asking for now.
Good.
So, yeah.
Glad they're working with us. Here's the only question I have, I don't know if it's a deal breaker, it's just something I want to know ahead of time. Is now if we own the property on the one side of Downey and we own, and the city has property on the other side of Downey. So now that part of Downey, if it ever gets resurfaced or something like that, is that going to be our responsibility? Since there, there's, there's not that dividing line?
Yeah, where's the state high, the county road start, city limit?
That makes sense, everybody get what the question is.
Yeah. I mean, in theory, it's not, it's not in the city limits, so it's still a county road, even though, I mean, in theory, they could assess the cost to both sides of the road that they wanted. But you'd have to assess all the rest of the people, they can't just say, oh, the city has to pay theirs, and then you come back and get a separate agreement if we were.
This isn't an annexation.
Right, right, this is, you can, city can own property outside its private city limits, just like it can inside.
That's all I really wanted. It wasn't even a deal breaker, I just didn't want to have that come up in twenty years.
In terms of the fence, Jerry, do you want to address that, Doc, or do you want me to? You guys are going for donations, right? And then I asked for it to be no mow fence, so that way we don't necessarily have to have individual trimmers down there. So for the most part, we're trying to have it be as minimal maintenance wise as possible.
Well, one of the questions I was gonna ask since we're, since we're talking about this, was the current, current park, is, is there a way, Matt, we could cut like a two foot trail all the way around the fence and then put like crushed limestone or something in there? Because the dogs run around the edge of it and it's all mud anyway. All right, I get that. There's another thing too, but I'm running out of time.
Probably a low priority, but that'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we got a motion and a second to approve. If there's any, no more discussion, I'd like to go ahead and vote then, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-seven, hiring temporary park and rec employees for the city and setting the salary for the positions. Melissa's got a good plan here, looks like some good, good people. Like glad to see Brad's coming back. Guess that's the going range, wage.
Yeah, we work part-time for the parks.
That's what it is today, I think. Any other discussion?
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Yeah, Miller, yeah. Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Okay, sewer rates. So Maggie believes a current rate may not be enough. Probably won't be enough. So she has a plan. Five percent increase immediately, well, in July, July first. And then another ten percent in a year, in a few months.
So what's that? Um, so what's that overall, how much in the last three years? From the time we started?
Ten bucks.
Ten bucks?
Three thirty-three each time?
Seven seventy-nine to begin with.
It was seven seventy-nine to begin with, and when we're gonna get done, it'll be seventeen sixty-five, so it's pretty near ten bucks.
For a thousand gallons.
A thousand gallons.
But we got.
Typical household.
Sewer plant.
Typical household uses three thousand gallons of water by average, so it's gonna be an extra thirty bucks for every household.
What's the minimum that we charge? Seventeen hundred?
Take that rate times one point seven.
This is assuming that we continually, residents continually use the same amount of water, correct? Right, and it's also assuming there's no growth calculated in either, so hopefully in the next year or two, we can reevaluate. I did ask those questions of Maggie, she said it's too, she doesn't want to underplay it. And then we've got to raise it a whole bunch again, another following year. So after these two years, we'll evaluate where we're at. There's a possibility of it at a third year, but I imagine she probably doesn't know the type of growth we're about to hit, so I assume a lot of those will be hitting in the next year or two on our sewer walls.
So the reason for this is to stay at one point one percent of the loan debt?
Correct, so it's a.
One point one to one ratio.
Yeah, debt coverage ratio, and that's pretty common. Even when you're talking housing, it's one point two, it's a little bit lower for municipality. But that is a requirement of the state SRF low interest loan. And as we kind of talked a little bit between Colton and Jerry, that it has to be done through user fees, can't be a property tax. And that is part of the, the state SRF fund, and so it's about a one percent interest. But that one percent interest goes into that grant that we are getting for Wobbsy Creek, so essentially it's no interest. Do we? Do we have any statistics at all on, since we've raised the sewer rates the last three years, well, actually the last two years, we don't have a year in yet? I guess my question is, are people trying to consume less to try to keep their water bills down? Or is it pretty much their water bills are all this?
No, because the ones that are trying to conserve pay a minimum, and so they're not even using the seventeen. They're the ones on the fixed income that aren't even using.
Yeah, but I'm thinking those that are, were maybe using four thousand a month now, maybe trying to do three thousand.
Talk to the kids a little more.
Well, I don't know about how the, the city works, but out at the mobile home village, before we had water meters on each of the, each of the homes. We used anywhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand gallons of water a day. We put the water meters on and started charging them, and now they use twelve to thirteen thousand gallons of water a day. And there's even more houses out there.
So, so what I'm getting at is, we're assuming that everybody's gonna use the same amount. Which if, if we raise the rate so high that people go, I'm gonna start saving, saving water, so my bills are less.
I say, I try.
So that means we're not actually gonna gain what we think we're gonna gain.
The growth should offset that.
Part of it, and I'd say that's why we would reevaluate every year, and I'd also say that's kind of why we have a financial advisor when it comes to this. Because she's not gonna, I would hope that that firm would not recommend too high of a rate that would bring a scenario you're, you're pointing out. I haven't asked those questions, but I would assume that they have, they have asked those questions themselves.
Well, she really doesn't have a choice.
Correct.
I mean, I mean, you know, you say you don't think she would bring us a rate that would, that would create that, but she didn't have a choice, she didn't come up with this rate herself. She took what we had to generate to be able to give the R one point one.
And what the bids came in. This is a function of what the bids.
Correct, and it's either that, the other option is to extend it to like a twenty or thirty year loan, but you're talking a much higher interest rate. And you're talking, the rates are gonna be this high for another ten so years.
So truthfully, we don't, we don't, we can debate all we want, but we ain't no choice. Our choice is, is do we do it in two different installments like this? Or do we wait until July twenty twenty-three and just sock them for the whole thing all at once? That's, that's what, that's what we're debating, we're not debating whether we're gonna, we're gonna raise it.
It's easier to trickle there.
I don't agree. Lock them all at once, vary entries, retiles.
So do we wait till the end though, or do we just do it now?
Wait till the end. It's like the mobile home court, wait till then, when they jump on board.
I disagree. So we've added two fifty a year? The last two, three years, no, three, two fifties. So we'd be adding another two fifty all at one time, again, so it'd be a fourth year we'd be adding.
Actually, didn't we just, it just went up like in February, and then we're gonna turn around raising it again on July first. I guess that's the part I don't.
It's another two fifty total.
That's what I'm saying, we just, next February, we just add another two fifty, instead of doing it for three years, we do another two fifty and next year, in February, the same thing.
When's our, when are we gonna start paying our loan?
Typically, when the project is done, but there are, usually there are payments in between, whether it's just interest only or, or something. So we still have some time to build up that.
At the end of twenty-three.
Part of it is, correct, correct.
When in twenty-four is it supposed to be done?
Hey Dave, when is the project supposed to be completed?
I believe it's fall of twenty-four. We're supposed to be operational. So we give them the summer seeding window and then some time to do punch list items.
Well, do we want to just push it December thirty-first, twenty-two, and then December twenty-first, twenty-three, and then we have our reset by some time and we're not raising it, and four months later raising it again?
Yeah. Wouldn't get posted that. Delaying it a little bit. I'd go as far as going to February, so we just do it every February twenty-third?
Yeah.
Well, we don't, it could be on more. I could be on more than that.
Well, it might have to be, it might have to be there by the, before February twenty-four.
He's proposing twenty-three.
Twenty-three, February twenty-three, the next February, we raise it another two fifty.
Okay.
Just okay, have each February.
And then that gets us.
We're, we're still missing one.
A bigger increase. He might be proposing it.
Oh, we have fifteen twenty-nine now? Yeah, so we had two fifty then.
Say two fifty.
Seventeen.
No, yeah, we're, so.
Which we would.
You're losing me, because there's, there's, we have two rate increases scheduled here.
Yeah.
So if you wait until February of twenty-three to raise one, then in February twenty-four, we're already gonna be making loan payments.
We won't need to raise it again though. She's proposing that we, when we raise it, the five percent and then the ten percent, we're at two dollars and forty.
It's.
Thirty, thirty-six cents.
He's saying do it just once.
I'm saying just do it February of twenty-three, two fifty, and we're done. And then we'll reevaluate.
Just go to the seventeen sixty-five.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, well, if you do two fifty on the, I mean, it'd be more than seventeen sixty-five, so.
I'd like that.
Two fifty would be eighteen.
Seventeen eighty-four, seventy-four. You can send that back to Maggie, my worry is, the projection could be we don't have enough for that first. I mean, to me, it'd be doing the same thing as what we'd be doing here, we'll get, we'll reevaluate it again, and if we, that time, we had to.
No, so you're worried that may not give us so.
Correct, so I'll know that we have enough for the first payment. So that's why I'll ask Maggie before, I think it's good to have the discussion, and I can ask her. I guess that's my worry, is if we don't have enough for the first payment, then, you know. So that's why she's trying to do this five percent now. So we can generate some income.
Correct. Okay, find out what you can, I guess.
Then maybe, okay, so then here's the deal then, maybe it would be better if we did the tempers, did the whole shoot match right now. Because what happens if, if we end up finding out that we don't have enough money? And it's too late to do anything about it?
What happens if we don't? If we don't have the money? Uh, we would start defaulting on a loan, which wouldn't be a good idea, coming up in front of our CIP plan that we're trying to do with the roundabout in East Mainz, and then two would be, I guess, contractor could decide to not finish the project. And then D and R's gonna find the crap out of us until, till we do.
So could we do, if we knew we could make that adjustment, can we do, if it came to that, can we make like a inter loan to ourselves to make that payment and then make an adjustment and pay ourselves back later? If we had to.
Maggie will know.
She'll know, let me.
That, yeah.
What has to go. Let me just bring your guys' concerns to her, and that way there's a clearer picture.
Good. That was our discussion on that.
All right, let's talk about turn. All right, let's talk about turn lane. So what's the issue with the turn?
So for future guidance, I think Dave and I, um, sounds like the current buyers and sellers did not work out a final agreement. There are a couple other developers in line. Um, so we're gonna see something regardless. Um, even if it's not the previous person that came in, there are a couple others. Um, direction wise, it would be nice to get the full council's direction on if somebody extends into Main Street. If a turn lane is required, yes or no, that way we can tell the developer right away and save everyone time.
Are we thinking just this property or other properties? Really, right now, the only property that probably.
I think probably in general in the area, let's say they split it in the three different areas. One of them's, I say any new yes, any new curb cuts from? I don't know.
Of the four dealer on?
Yeah. That's fair.
Okay, you can start talking.
They're waiting for you.
Yeah. Well, at least at least meeting with Roger and Jerry Colton with the certain, with the with the scenario we we were playing into last meeting, they felt like it was important to at least have it at least in a plat and required. Whether we do it in twenty-eight or right then and there was a different discussion. Uh, but I think for the purposes of Dave and myself going forward, we need a clear picture in in what the full council wants. That way.
We have to project us a good message, strong message.
Correct.
For what we want.
All right, let's let's step back a second because the roundabout is gonna have curb and gutter, correct? Our portion of the roundabout is gonna have curb and gutter. Well, that's gonna stop.
That's gonna stop.
Well, with the roundabout stops, the curb and gutter is gonna stop. I'm just, eventually, we're looking at, you know, we're thinking that eventually the school, that whole area there is gonna need probably the turn lane eventually. So at that point, now we got curb and gutter, clearly this end that's really going nowhere, and this curb and gutter is gonna dump into our ditch and it's gonna wash out, it's gonna be a big issue. But that's something we'll have to deal with for now. But eventually, in my opinion, from the roundabout all the way through the turning lane, it's gonna need to be curb and gutter.
That would be my end goal.
Whether that's just a, you know, a section of concrete for the curb and gutter with asphalt in between, or if we tear out the whole street and put all concrete all the way to the end eventually, I'm just eventually.
I've always thought that a turn lane is gonna have to happen eventually. That's my view. In front of the high school at a minimum.
So Adam and I talked the other day, and he brought up a good point, but the Meadows, when the Meadows put in Dawson, it was supposed to have single R one lots pretty much all the way through the north. They came back to us and had rezoned to R two, and now there's a lot of R two in there that which is actually almost double amount of traffic coming off of Dawson. So.
And double the left turns into Dawson, northbound on Dawson. Dawson need for a turn lane.
So I maybe missed this part. The the one development's now not gonna happen. Do we know if the second developer is insisting on voting, road out on Main?
Probably not. But with everything that's gone on, that there's no guarantee that that development will happen. So I think first is the direction, and second is the turn lane gonna be required regardless. That's kind of a question, question.
Even if that, if a new developer does not go onto Main Street, and there we do require a turnway later on, we are gonna need some of that property.
Right.
Twenty feet, I don't know. The.
Okay, so going to that, or we go to the south. I went back to her notes way back when the school came with their proposal. All the turning lanes. Um, white south widening, north and south. Or split widening, north and south, so they were gonna do a half a lane on the north and half lane on the south. It's three hundred and ten thousand dollars. North side asphalt was two hundred and sixty thousand, and that's where we initially were going. That that was the cheapest, that was where we were gonna go.
Full on to the north side.
Everything to the north. South side asphalt was two hundred and eighty-three thousand, which is only twenty-three thousand dollars more, which seemed to be to me was way to go, but anyway, the north side asphalt and a curb and gutter, which I believe that was gonna be a concrete curb and gutter and then asphalt, and maybe it was, but maybe it's gonna be all asphalt curb and gutter, which I got throughout, that was at four hundred and twenty thousand. If we did the north side concrete, it was three hundred and forty thousand dollars. South side concrete was three hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
South side was a lot more than going to the south side.
Those are the numbers they gave us. So I thought I had earlier tonight when I was thinking about this, was somewhere we're gonna have to acquire some property. Either on the south side or the north side. Which means we're probably gonna have to pay for some property. If we did it on the south side and we helped the school out on their on their cost share, and we acquired their property, and moved it to the south side.
So you've always thought the south side was a better place to go.
But the creek. Apparently, the creek has been the issue.
Yeah.
And I don't know how much property we'd have to acquire if we split this thing half and half, but half of it on north side, half of it south side.
A wide season there. Sixty-six?
So that's just something to think about when we do get to the point where we're we're a few years down the road, it's probably even doing this, so the cost of this is gonna go up dramatically. We think about acquire what that might cost.
Going to the north is problematic because there's, I believe there's some major fiber optic under there, and it's gonna be forty grand just to move all that stuff.
Six thousand.
Yeah. That's a year ago.
Yeah.
Which is a good reason to go to the south. Save that thirty thousand or more, forty, fifty, maybe.
If you go to the south, doesn't that solve the drainage problem? And there, the curb and gutter, if you go south, water come down off the hill and go right into the creek.
They always put ground ants so that water.
Well, with curb and gutter, it'd be storm sewer, storm sewers.
I thought there was some sort of drainage problem going to the south. If we went to the south, that would cure it.
Probably cure a lot of things going either way. Get rid of that crappy shoulder one.
We're not being very decisive, are we?
No. Dave, do you remember any of the north-south conversations right away?
Yeah, east of Dawson Drive, there's a segment of the creek that runs parallel to the right of way. It's pretty much right on the right of way, and it's in the flood plain. Uh, we would need to push that over and likely relocate the bridge for the trail. And we also have an issue where the old school entrance, the the original school entrance was, there's a softball parking lot right in there for events and softball. And if we go south, it shortens the distance from that driveway to the street, creates some staging issues there as well. So the school wasn't really in favor of going south for that reason. Uh, we also have a trail that we're looking to put on that south side eventually, and that's going to further encumber that that area, so. There were a few things that they were looking at that made it more favorable to go north in addition to the reduced cost, just the other space, particularly down where that that creek is and the bridge.
Is splitting that, what do we need? We need ten feet, we need twelve feet?
Right, so the issue with splitting that is then you have wheel tracks on part of the old pavement and part of the new pavement, and that joint that's in between just doesn't work very well. It it tends to separate, um, in most cases where that's been done unless you replace the pavement entirely. So you want to try to get a new lane either on the north or south side and have the traffic entirely on that new lane.
Even if it was shaved down and topped over at some point, that seam would be covered up or.
Right, you're you're look, you're looking at a base that is underneath the existing roadway that's been driven on for years, and then you're going to take a a ditch shoulder and try to get that compacted and put pavement on it. So even though you mill it down a little bit, you're still relying on that underlying base to provide the support, and it just doesn't act the same as the old roadway. Inevitably, you get that separation in that joint, and it's just a maintenance issue.
The price of asphalt and concrete still pretty close to the same price, Dave?
I should be able to tell you on the twenty-eighth, we we have a project, we're bidding both ways, but from what we're what we're seeing is, yeah, they they should be pretty close if you look at equivalent structure.
So it's more excavation, asphalt, I mean, pavement, gotta get rid of everything. Yeah, I would say we'll get it better. I'm thinking if we were going
Both ways, both sides?
Well.
So what the roundabout, they went to the north with the taking out the right of way. Because there there's more right of way on the south side than there is on the north side. What?
Existing road.
Main street. But it connects to Main Street. It's going to be further north in the right of way, and there's gonna be more right of way to the south.
That's because of the trail. Trails on the south side, that's why there's more right of way on the
Yeah.
Was the roundabout designed one way or the other? Dave, do you know if turn lane even wasn't even in in the equation for the roundabout, was it?
It wasn't, but we were trying to straighten that roadway, so we carried Main Street on the east side of the intersection through the roundabouts, pushing everything north on that intersection. There were also concerns with Stulman's property on the south side and trying to fit that roundabout in, so it was widened to the north to try to minimize impacts there.
We're getting back to the original question.
Yeah, help, thank, thanks.
Um, if a developer comes in there and curb cuts on the Main Street, I say, say we need a turn lane. And you should be responsible.
And in addition, the developer needs to plan for giving up some property for a turn lane. If it's.
I mean, I guess that would be the way to do it, right?
Statement we need to tell the developer.
I would say I would rather have it and then not need it, you know, the other way than than need it and it's too late.
Right. Yeah, I would say with all the the close proximity of all the intersections in that short period, that short section there that we have another one that's gonna need to turn.
Absolutely.
The whole thing on your turn.
Yeah.
But that's the direction I would tell the developer. You wanna come onto Main Street, you're gonna pay for a turn lane.
And if you don't, you're still gonna have to.
I think you're still gonna have to be prepared to give up.
Plan for it.
Twenty feet or so. That makes sense, everybody?
Whatever is gonna be needed.
I don't know if it'd be twenty feet.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be twenty feet.
Yeah. I wish it could be less than that. Okay. Well, unfortunately, this isn't dead yet, so, but maybe it is for tonight.
It's for tonight, move on.
All right. All right, city administrator.
So.
New baby.
Big, yeah, good news on my end. I'll be in and out the rest of this week, but I'll start normal hours next Monday. So that part's good. I did send out quite a few nuisance letters, um, mostly Greenview and Methodist Church area, just based on those is, those are where I've got most of my complaints from. Um, there's a lot of other parts of town that could arguably need it more than those, but I just went based off of comments when I've got them. Those were the two areas to go after first. And then, um, bigger things that to look for coming up is May second, there'll be quite a bit of development agreement discussions probably with for sure would be Parkside Hills. And then I don't know how far we are on crawl, if if they're ready yet. But for sure, we'll.
Wants to move.
Come, 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 come. So.
Okay. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool. Oh, we're still trying to set up meetings.
Dave, any, city engineer, do you have anything to add to anything significant?
Just a few things. So I A D utilities, we're still working with the DOT and the gas utility to try to get that all coordinated so we can get our plans out. Um, last we heard was that the gas company was waiting on some procedural items on their end with the Iowa Utilities Board, and they wouldn't be able to put anything out until likely this fall, so we're trying to get DOT to allow us to go ahead and bid our portion of the project, uh, noting that we have coordinated with the gas company, so hope to have more on that soon. Um, I did receive notification that Herbert Hoover Highway should be closed on April twenty-fifth is what they're telling us. Uh, wastewater plant should start construction in June, and Colton, I have to correct my earlier statement, I looked at the schedule, it's November of twenty-three is the works in operation, but we do have a grace period from the time we put it in operation to when the first payment is due, and that was what I was looking at in twenty-four. So, um, we'll have to confirm that with Maggie and adjust that schedule accordingly. And then the last thing I have is congratulations, Adam. Um, I know that's been a a long process for you guys.
So in other words, if we waited until twenty-three for the rate increase, everybody would be on board then. The mobile home park and everything.
No, they won't be on board.
Why?
Well, the new part might be, but not the old part.
Why?
But the sewer?
Yeah.
That's the old part. Just the new part. The new, how many are there, twenty-four?
Going on?
Okay, oh, guys, just a lot of something I, thanks a lot, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Anyone else, city staff? Staff, anyone? Hearing nothing. Mayor and council, I have nothing.
I have a quick question for Matt. Did we get an agreement on the new brush pile? Yeah. Um.
How much more time is that gonna take of your guys? Again, people aren't gonna be, that's what I'm afraid of now, is people aren't gonna be taking their stuff up on their own. So now it's gonna be a big load on our city workers to be going around and picking up yard wastes.
Even with it shut right now, which I know people aren't doing as much. And Cole.
Yeah. What, what are our alternatives?
I have no idea. We've been talking about this for three years, ever since we knew the sewer thing was coming too, and we never did anything.
I mean, there's really not any alternatives. We discussed buying a piece of property, but that's not in the budget, we can't afford that.
This is a good alternative till wastewater plant is done, and then we'll have it back. It's a property for brush pile. Temporary.
Okay, uh, anything else, anybody? Otherwise, motion to adjourn?
Second, second by Tom. Also, favor say aye.
What's land or?